I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Mrs. Kehoe will provide me the oath of office as district clerk.
Are you coming all the way around, or are you going right here?
Right here.
Would you repeat after me? I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of New York
of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of district clerk.
of district clerk.
Congratulations.
And at this time, we're going to do the oath of office for our two new but reoccurring board members, Ms. Lynn Lonhardt and Dr. Charmaine Wijasinger. So let's start with Lynn.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of New York
of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of board member of Bethlehem Central School District.
of board member of Bethlehem Central School District.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duty of the office
of the board member of Bethlehem Central School District.
of board member of the Bethlehem Central School District.
Yep, and I guess Tom's ready for his.
Anything to get the air conditioning going.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of superintendent of schools.
of superintendent of schools.
Now, at this time, we're going to open the floor for nominations for the office of board president. Can I get a motion to open?
So moved.
Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Matt Downey.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I have to do up the notes, too. And... Do we have any other nominations for the seat? No more? Okay, so do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
And at this time, Matt, do you have anything to say? Do you have any opposition to the seat?
I don't think so. No, I just thank you, everybody, for your support. I'm assuming, though.
Yeah, we have to officially vote. I mean, we've spoken before.
I would be honored to be able to serve as president again.
Okay, can I have a vote? Or do I have any?
All those in favor of Matt.
All those in favor of Mr. Downey as board president?
Aye.
Any opposition? That carries. And Matt, we can now do your oath of office. Congratulations.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of board president.
of board president.
My job here is done.
Keep all that stuff here, so I know what I'm saying.
So at this time, we would open up the floor for nominations for vice president?
I nominate Charmaine Wijasinger.
Do we have to do an open close like we did with that? Or no?
No, you can just open nominations.
Okay, open nominations, okay. That's a first. Second?
Yeah.
Second for Charmaine. Any other nominations? All in favor of Charmaine? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Charmaine, congratulations. Guess I got a good person. You gonna get the oath?
Yes, she could.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and the Constitution of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of board vice president.
of board vice president.
Next agenda item is a selection of board members for the various committees. First, we have the BCTA process committee.
I haven't been on in a while. I've been on the BCA for a while, so...
Just a question, without Joanne and Christine here.
We'll just place somewhere.
If you're not here, sorry.
I'll go on either process committee, whichever one is open after people choose.
I'll be either one, too. I'll do the BCTA.
BCTA, BCTA. We need one more for BCTA. Mike, okay, so that's the three for BCTA?
Mm-hmm.
So the other three will be the BCA? That's easy enough.
So that'll be Charmaine, Joanne, and Christine for BCA.
The audit committee?
I'll be on that again.
You'll be on that?
I'll be on that also.
And then if so, we have Lynn and Charmaine, what about Joanne, maybe? I don't want to be on that.
Well, you don't want to be on it? Okay, then we'll ask Joanne, I guess, if she wants to be on it.
Well, we can just put... I think at this point, we could just do it.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so Joanne.
Joanne, Lynn, and Charmaine. And do you wish to assign a chair, or...
Do we do that first, Fanning? Because I didn't last time, but I think this year I'll volunteer.
Want to be chair?
Yeah. Go for it, Lynn.
All right, good. Next is the policy committee. It's Mike.
I love doing it, but if I'm on the audit committee, I'm kind of reluctant.
I'll do policy.
Okay.
Okay, so Diane and Mike. And then I guess we could wait and see if Joanne or Christine would want to do it.
Christine was on it this year, and she's... Who's on the audit committee?
Christine.
No.
Christine and Joanne.
No, no, no.
We put Joanne, right.
So Christine would stay on policy with Mike and Diane.
Diane, okay. Sounds good. Health insurance committee?
Did that ever run last year? Like, did we ever?
Judy?
We did not have any meetings. That's a good committee.
I'll be on that committee now.
It might need to, because you're coming up on negotiations this year.
Yeah, I've done that before. I can do that one.
Diane? Lynn?
Does Christine work in that area, or not really?
She works for Farm Family, I know.
Okay.
We could see if Christine would be interested in that. And then facilities and grounds committee?
I'll do that. I've been on that before.
I would make sure to have somebody on there, because the meetings are usually at like 7:30 in the morning. I couldn't attend a lot of them, so it'd have to be somebody who goes to work late or is retired.
So you two, and then from Joanne and Christine, who would like to be on that committee?
The committee will be winding down a little over the next year.
So it probably won't be a lot, so you probably just need to ask. It's been nice, because Mike and I have been on it for, I think, at least a year.
And just so that you know, you will have one in the next three weeks, just because we have some change orders coming.
Well, maybe you should then use your executive power and place one on the health committee, one on the facilities committee.
Okay, then we'll put Christine on the health insurance committee and Joanne on the facilities committee.
Might I suggest we do a Google doodle cattle under as soon as possible on that facilities committee? Because I know both Christine and I are on vacation, not this next week, but the following week.
All right, moving on, because I know Diane says I have a time schedule there.
Oh, you're running close.
Appointment of officers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of officers, action eight items A through G. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Item number eight, other appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following other appointment action items A through F.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Designations, item number nine. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following designation action items A through C.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Item number 10, authorizations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following authorization action items A through F.
So moved.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a question on C. I mean, the wording is just different than all the others. It talks about the superintendent approving conventions and workshop and conferences. Is that for all staff, or is it just for all staff? Okay, thank you.
And I think that's in policy, actually.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? Item number 10 carries. Item number 11, bonding of personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of bonding of personnel action items A through C.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just that that is sufficient. The numbers are sufficient for that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? Item 11 carries. Item 12, other items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policy action items A through B.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just any... Well, I mean, you guys were on the policy committee approving these, but I mean, there weren't any major changes to anything. It was more cosmetic editing.
It was changing the whole code of conduct documents, editing and outlining. It took four days.
I think the official term is nitpicking.
I am trying to think. We did spend two hours on the code, but I think a lot of it was knocking out repetition and placing things, but there was no substantive...
Yeah, like where it said the board, we did Board of Education.
A public hearing if there had been. Right, right, no, no, no. And then I just had a question on the receipt of information. I mean, we used to only have one credit card in the whole district, and of course, there weren't cell phones or whatever. We do monitor the usage?
Absolutely. It's very, I mean, very well done. I commend the business department. The auditors do it. You get, basically, I sign off on it each month. Judy signs off on it, Martha and Phyllis.
Michelle looks at them, too, so they're very closely scrutinized. Everything's properly encumbered, and there are limits on the cards themselves.
Yes.
So volume of transactions, dollars amount of transactions.
We're very secure in regards to that, and it hasn't been...
It sounds like it's a monthly review, it sounds like you said, at least every month. Yeah, it's a monthly statement and a monthly review. That's good. I just think it's important that the committee knows that, too.
Plus, it would go through the claims auditor review process, too. Any further discussion on item 12? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? Item 12 carries. Item number 13, approval minutes. The minutes of the July, June 17, 2015 regular board meeting?
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that carries? We are now on to the superintendent's report. Before we begin that, I'm sure most of you know that Dr. Douglas has announced to the public that, and to the board and to staff, that he will be leaving in the end of August. He has accepted a position in another district closer to family members, and we wish to thank Dr. Douglas for all his work and dedication over the past three and a half years.
Thank you. The harder part is now two districts are asking me questions, so... But no, thank you very much on behalf of my family and myself. It's been a pleasure. Bethlehem has been in probably one of the best positions, I think, that it's been in a while, and that's through everybody's hard work and through this board's hard work as well. And it's a wonderful feeling always knowing that you leave on a break note, especially from some of the times that we've gone through over the past six or seven years across the state, going to a district that will need some of that as well, especially on the financial side. But it's a challenge. Nice part is it's a 30-minute drive on holidays, weekends, and even on a evening to spend some time with Carter's cousins, and that's something that's been very trying for him of late, and his birthday's coming up, so they're finally all making one visit to Bethlehem for that birthday in a couple of weeks, so... But on the part of the superintendent's report, obviously, it's the culmination of the year. We had our commencement exercise at SEFQ, and I know that the board, as well as the community, heard some differences in regards to some of the commencement oratory remarks. And I have already taken the time to discuss it a little with building principal, Mr. Landry, who is here. And Mr. Landry is going to work on a process going forward that will help make sure that the best guidance for commencement avenue for the district, as well as the speeches that reflect what Bethlehem is known for, are more reviewed in the future beforehand, which has been sort of the negative to this year's graduation that we've heard so many comments from, and I know the board has received those comments as well. But I commend Mr. Landry, because the process that has always been followed from time to time may need to be revised, and he's pretty much said it's on me, and he's going to revise the process with his staff and the advisors and the students going forward, so I just wanted to update the board on that. But other than that, you know, we had a lot of families have a great evening and great success. We had a very good senior celebration that went off. We received no calls on the weekend. It's in the summer months. We wish all of our graduates well. We wish all of our returning students, you know, the best and really to actively participate. There's a lot of great things that are going to be coming online and happening next year, now that the district is fully funding its entire budget to the point that it can with the programs that it has, and hopefully that remains for a long time, so that everybody can take a break and try to enhance what are the opportunities for the students in the district. And I know we'll have a presentation shortly from the BCCF when we get to the recognition of visitors piece. So I want to thank everybody for their hard work at the end of the year, especially the teachers, the faculty, the staff, the administration, and the Board of Education, because it does grind on you until you get to the end of the year, and then once it comes, it sort of goes, and we're already in the mode of starting for next year's students. But we want to wish everybody a safe, healthy summer and that they have a great time as they head off to their future careers, so that's my...
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Next, the Board of Education report, and I'd like to start this off with Lynn, as the NISBA board president has a certificate to present to one of our board members, so...
Yeah, I do this in many districts, and I think it's kind of special when I can give something to somebody in your own district. This person has, as we know, professional development is very important for all members of the staff, whatever they're doing, and it's also important for board members, so that they keep up to date, so that board members can make the best decisions here at the table. And tonight, we're honoring Charmaine Wijasinger. She's... There are four levels of accomplishment of professional development at NISBA, and you've reached level three. And here, you receive a certificate for the mastery award, and I think you probably get a conference, too. I'm not sure.
I think I get a free conference, even in person, so...
And you even have my signature, which is... This book, actually, is really nice to use, you know, a pad to take the notes when you don't...
No, it's not my book, I promise.
Congratulations.
Well, I don't know how we top that off, so we can go on. No, we had, since our last meeting, we had the moving up ceremony that many of us were able to attend, and a very nice ceremony, as always, put on by the middle school administration and staff and faculty, and it was good to see all the students that were moving up and becoming freshmen here for Mr. Landry. And then we had a commencement that was very nice, and a nice job done by the administration and staff in getting it off without any hitches. It went very smoothly, on time, and ended very nicely, so thank you for that. Anyone else have anything to...
I just thought I'd mention a couple of things for the end of the legislative session. I don't know whether anybody's really interested. Maybe Laura is. Because she keeps up with these things probably more than most people. Some of the good things that happened, they rejected that education tax credit. I know it sounded good, but it really was providing funding for the wealthiest people to send their children to private schools. Basically, that's what it was doing. They did not raise the charter school cap, now that is a concern here, but just in general. They also, maybe, this one probably isn't as clear, excluded BOSI's capital expenses from the tax cap.
That's a big one.
If BOSI's needs to do some expansion or do any improvement in the career and technical area, those expenses come back on the school district, and then the school district formally had to have that expense outside the tax cap, which certainly did not please many districts, especially the poorer districts. They really couldn't afford it.
It really could hurt the local districts, because it would come off our tax cap, so without the capital expense at BOSI's, we might have a tax cap of 2%. But if BOSI's needed to build, and they passed the resolution, and they applied our cost to it, our 2% could go to potentially zero or negative, which means we couldn't enhance our district in order to help BOSI's enhance their overall district. And it's really a shame that they never did that in the first place, because BOSI's are now about five or six years behind the schedule, and they're actually costing more now because they haven't been able to bear things.
But I guess, better like than never.
Yes.
Look at it that way. Also, probably, you know, Judy probably appreciates this, including the pilots and the tax base crow factor, which was not there before, so that's helpful to local districts, too. And also providing funding to state aid for the release of questions for the test. I mean, we're pushing for that, and that's what was requiring all that field testing, which we did, you know, pass resolution against, but getting that money should prevent a lot of that occurring anyplace in the state. Unfortunately, they did not delink the state aid from the APPR. They really have nothing to do with each other, but somehow they couldn't do that, and they also would not extend the deadline for APPR plans, which is November 15, and I'm sure everybody will come in during the summer to work on this. So, I mean, we're fortunate, because we haven't had issues with it, but in a lot of other places, that's a major, major problem. So I guess there are mixed feelings about what the legislature accomplished or didn't accomplish in terms of education.
The district here is going to have to apply for a hardship waiver, because in order to meet the approval requirements, you really have to turn in your plans during the first week of September.
Right.
And we're unable to negotiate at that point, even under good faith, so...
I had a great conversation with Lynn Keys after attending the high school national track event, when I realized there was no coach down there, and I was the coach. And with 100-degree heat...
No, no, you weren't the coach.
Well, the kids said, here's the...
For liability reasons, you weren't the coach.
They said, oh, here's the armband, you get in for free. And when kids started passing out, it was 100-degree heat, and not our kids were passing out, kids were getting injured on the track. And I realized the event organizers were calling for the coaches for different teams. I realized there wasn't one down there, and then I realized it was me. So when I got back, I talked to Mr. Keys about it, and had a great conversation that Bethlehem employees and coaches cannot attend those events as coaches. It really pertains to track and field... Cheerleading, he said. And so there are strict regulations about sending B.C. employees down there, but we, he and I talked about perhaps doing information session for parents of athletes who might be heading that way, so that parents who've been there before can share their experiences about what worked and what didn't, and what parents should expect, so that they know there is no coach available and what kinds of things would work and not work for those athletes, so... And so the athletes and the parents also know that the kids are basically on their own, and if a parent travels with them, the parent may be called upon to respond or something. So that was a very... I really appreciated his expertise and his guidance on that.
Anything else? Okay, moving on, we can go to, at this time, the board has set aside for visitors to address the Board of Education on any agenda item?
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah. You guys, come on up then, right? We'll do this. One of our agenda items coming up is an acceptance of a donation, and it is from the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation General Fund of the, for the greater capital region. The funds will be used district-wide for various classroom innovation grants, and I'll let you guys speak to us, please.
Excuse me, you're going to have to use the microphone for the recording.
We just wanted to say thanks to generosity of both individual and business members of our community. The BCCF raised over $17,000 to support grants and other activities in our school district. We are very pleased to say that of that $17,000, we are pleased to award $12,789.68 to the school district to support those educators who apply for these grants, so that they might employ and use innovative and creative means to otherwise implement and support their teaching in the classroom, otherwise enriching. And just to give you a few quick examples of what we were able to support, one of the grants funded the purchase of tools and hands-on materials to introduce STEM learning in kindergarten, classroom, and handbag. Another grant supported the purchase of two 3D printers, one to be placed in the middle school and one to be placed in the high school. And these are just a couple of the grants that we were able to afford. There will be a full list, complete detailed list, on our website in the coming days, so please feel free to check it out and see what else the BCCF is about and what we're engaged in. So at this point, I would just like to say, on behalf of the BCCF, thank you so much to the Bethlehem community for supporting the work that the BCCF does and the programs that we support. And without further delay, we'd like to offer this check to the district.
Can you just introduce yourselves from the board that are here?
Sure. Tonight, on behalf of the board, Deborah Mazel, okay? Laura Bearman, okay? Tina Sheehan, and myself, Janine Toranto.
I like to be behind.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, we get behind you and behind the check.
Can you guys in?
Unless I lose 50 pounds on the ballot.
So, one more.
Did you get a lot of applications for the grants?
We received a little over, I think it was 13.
Okay. So then you, then you had a selection process?
No, we had a selection process and there were some really great ones. So I encourage everybody to review the website and take a look at some of the grants that.
Yeah, that's great.
And I will make it to a meeting. I'm still the liaison from the Board. I get all the minutes and Mike sends the agenda, but I just haven't been able to. It's been a year.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate that. The faculty themselves, I know, have always benefited from your grants and appreciate it also. Anyone else who would like to address the Board on an agenda item? Item number 16, Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following: Finance, Action Items A through H.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question? On the facilities rental fees, I'm trying to remember where it is.
C.
C, thank you. I know Mr. Nolte is there. Is, I don't think those have been raised for a while, have they?
Nothing has been changed.
Is it enough to cover the basic needs of the buildings and grounds that are used by the community?
I'd say going rate, when we established the rates many years ago, we called around all the districts. I don't know if it covers everything. There is additional charges if overtime is at, so.
We bill back the overtime, so short answer, yes.
It's fine.
Our rates, this had been looked at by the internal auditor within the last year and they had done a survey and affirmed that these rates are within the market range for this area. And yes, it is sufficient to cover our costs.
Thank you.
I have a question. When nurses come in as substitutes, how many hours a day do they work?
Nurses?
The school nurses.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half and teacher, you know, substitute.
Same. Teacher subs and nurse subs all work seven and a half.
So well over $120 a day for a nurse, but only $95 for a teacher? Especially if you're actually teaching the classes, which in many cases.
Well, if they're in for, those are just the daily rates. If people are in like longer-term subs, obviously the rates go up. The problem was, was when we had that rate for nurses, because there's so few nurses, we couldn't get anyone to come because the other districts, we looked at what other districts were paying. Some were more, some were less, but we were, you know, we can't be without a nurse in our building, so.
I understand that, but so there's no problem? There's an overflow of substitute teachers?
Remember, I think, what was it, one year or two years ago, the rate was actually higher.
Right, no, I remember that.
And we reduced it down.
With the teacher subs, the, I mean, obviously there's been a large amount of layoffs and reductions in districts over the last several years, so we've not had an issue getting subs and most of the districts, I'd say were a little lower than some districts, but not tremendously. The issue we did see this year in the spring with all the testing, there seemed to be fewer subs available and we were short quite a bit, but all the districts were. It wasn't just us. BOSI's had a shortage of subs to provide districts. And some of the companies that scored the assessments were hiring some of those people. So they were paying them more than any of the districts were, so that was a part of the problem as well. So I think it's something we should probably look at in the next year or two, what the, those, because my guess is that the, we might need to bump them up a little bit in order to maintain the number of subs that we need, especially at that time of year. But it hasn't been a problem up until this year was really the first year we saw it in the spring, that we didn't have enough subs.
Thank you. Maybe it's just put a flag for budget development time.
Right.
Is to think about, you know, should, if you were to bump those up or recommend it, recommend what would need to be put in the budget.
Any further discussion on any of the others? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Item number 17, Professional Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following: Instructional Staff, Action Items A through PT.
So move.
Second.
The first and the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries?
I can't get through the list that fast, I'm sorry.
Item number 18, Support Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following: Support Staff, Action Items A through F.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Item number 19, Correspondence for Action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following: Correspondence for Action, Items A through U. First and a second. Any discussion?
No, no, I was thinking. I was thinking. Well, yeah, I actually want to say, you know, in the audit reports, there were two areas that were flagged and I know that we got an update in terms of corrective action by the district. I would just hope that the district would keep the Board updated as those corrective actions move forward.
Well, and certainly the Audit Committee, so.
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Item number 20, Recognition of Visitors. At this time, anyone who would like to address the Board on any non-agenda item may do so. If you could state your name, we're being recorded for TV.
For past 30.
So people can watch us on Sunday night.
Lance, I'm walking around.
You guys really want to give me?
I'm Diane Tendenbaum. I am a parent in this district and I would like to address the Board on the topic of timing of commencement. I think most of you, probably some of you I know, received the email. And I apologize if the language was more colorful than it should have been. I just want to make the argument, a couple of things. I'm a parent here in this district. I have three children, one who's already graduated two years ago, Max. I have a rising senior, Zachary, and my youngest is Sam and he is going to be in seventh grade next year. Thankfully, the report card worked out well. I am also a pediatrician for many of the families in this district. So I've talked to a lot of families about this topic and I have yet to encounter a family that didn't agree with me and I don't think I was being too boorish about it. I hope I wasn't. The timing of graduation currently is 6:30 and it has been for many years and I know that's on a weekday and I know it's always been on the Friday, the last Friday of June. That being said, those of us with relatives have a really, really difficult time planning a celebratory dinner for our graduating seniors. For a 6:30 commencement time, the senior would have to be leaving whatever function our family is having at 5 o'clock, meaning that dinner needed to have finished prior to that for the family. And this doesn't work out so well. I have a mother who's 85 and even she, who as I mentioned to you guys is sort of the queen of the early bird special, found that that was a remarkably inconvenient time. There's been an argument made that this time was originally set to accommodate working families, but I can't imagine that there is a working family that couldn't plan ahead of time to take one day or half a day off to accommodate an earlier start time. I also happen to bring with me a list of many of the other surrounding districts. None of them have a commencement start time of 6:30. Gilderlin has a 4:00 p.m., Albany does theirs on a weekend. Many of them do them on weekends. Again, perhaps to accommodate working families, but there's not a single district in the area that starts at 6:30. So I would like to propose that the Board and the high school administrators strongly consider moving the time back maybe to 4:00 p.m. so that those of us who wanted to have out-of-town visitors, have a dinner afterwards could potentially, could potentially accommodate our families. I also think that it would be potentially beneficial for Bethlehem businesses and restaurants, as well as maybe some restaurants in the greater Albany area, because you can't really plan a dinner at a restaurant at 3:30 or 4:00 o'clock and you certainly could at 7:00 or 7:30. So I, that, this is my proposition and whatever the Board needs in terms of other information or legwork on my part, I'm happy to hear.
Thank you for your comments. I know we'll have Mr. Landry look into it. I think in my response to your, to your email, there are a lot of logistical issues other than just the start time. I know you had mentioned that the SEFQ had no other graduations that day, but we don't know what they might have had other than graduations that day and we are dependent on that, that facility and their availability, but it's something we would look at.
And I have a chance to make those phone calls on behalf of the school and.
We appreciate the effort, but it will be done by the school.
Thank you again for your comments. Anyone else who would like to address the Board? Future meetings. Next Thursday, the 16th, we'll be having an executive session to discuss a Dr.
Superintendent hiring process.
Yes, Superintendent replacement. The following public meeting will be Wednesday, August 5th. Oh, actually, that's, we're having a Board retreat that night. I'm sorry. End, end of meeting, okay. We're having, it's a busy night for us. We'll be having a retreat starting at 4:30. 6 o'clock is an anticipated executive session and then regular public meeting at 7:00 p.m. that night. And then the next public meeting after that is Wednesday, September 2nd, which will be a week before school starts, executive session at 6:00 p.m. with a public meeting starting at 7:00 p.m.
If you can remind everybody, we set the tax rate at the August 5th meeting. That's the primary purpose of that.
And that is so we can send out bills to everybody for September.
I didn't want to say that.
Well, that's, that's also that tax rate, so. We do not have any need to go into, back into executive session?
Go to adjourn.
First, the second? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming.